We've been at seven o'clock. So we can get started. Do we have anyone online?
This does not look like it.
Okay. Okay, um, so we, um, we can start with approval of the previous minutes. They were posted online. Did everyone that was here get a chance to read them?
Quiet.
How are you doing?
Second few senior.
Yes.
Well, no, we've started. We already started.
Yeah.
Yes, you will.
I knew it this.
Okay. So any comments on the previous minutes?
Oh, I will approve in the next half for instance.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Last minute. I. Minutes are approved. Treasurer's report.
I have nothing.
We have nothing to report from the treasurer.
That will have someone.
Planners' report. Thank you for this very, very complete report. Are there anything that you want to elaborate on? Or does anyone have questions for Mike? That everyone get a chance to read his report, so.
Us, uh, we get open for any questions. Um, I don't have anything to add. I intend to just, it'll probably be mostly this going forward. And when, if anything changes or actions happen on, I'll add to it where needed is necessary.
Okay.
There's one question.
Yeah.
The, uh, you're reaching out to Dawson and Flinker for money?
No. Oh, sorry, did I?
Well, assistance to conduct the same for, uh, assist project. We get money for that, for the center visioning?
Yeah, uh, that's a earmark, uh, funds.
And they do the same thing? They get the same, from the same fund, or?
Yes.
That does actually remind me of, of kind of, Dawson and Flinker were our advisors on, um, the town master plan. Was that fifteen, twenty?
Two thousand four, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At some point, we probably are supposed to update our master plan.
Oh, yeah.
Is it two thousand twelve?
Yeah, yeah, we'll get, we'll, we'll.
That was our five year plan.
We had talked about doing it in parts or different committees.
I mean, the, the town has already kind of started that, and, you know, in a sense, you have the.
The house roots.
Yeah.
Housing.
The housing chapter is pretty much done.
Yeah.
As well as the economic development chapter.
Yep.
Uh, for, I mean, we're just getting older now, because that was completed in two thousand nineteen, but.
Yeah, but I mean, I, you know, hypothetically, we can just go through different sections.
One of the other, other big ones, uh, reparations, the big one.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, there's a big.
Practice with.
Yep. Open space plan. There is an open space plan and a wrap plan.
There's a lot of, a lot of the components flying around.
Okay.
There's a question. Um, we have housing choice for doing these ability study. Why would it be a housing choice grant? I'm curious.
That's just what the state decided that it was eligible under, so that's what they decided to approve it under.
So it has nothing but to do with house?
Well, it, it, not necessarily. Housing choice is the designation that the town received to be eligible for certain grants, that being one of them. And so, uh, the housing choice grant, I think, is, is in place to support a lot of things for housing choice communities, but it's not, and yeah, I think the name is deceiving.
Okay. I want to ask, we didn't look at housing.
We did look at a proposal for housing in the Holy Angels at one point.
When? Or my, that was part of the two thousand twelve master plan.
No, there was a proposal. There was only one to put condos in there and washing underneath.
It was, and also in, well, I actually wanted something to. You used one of the bar, you want to put fire in it. Yeah, what was the house?
I'm kind of guy actually.
Yeah, the condo got bought because he was the same guy that has the, the bought the property. I just, I don't know. I know one has proposed holy smokes. Same place. Okay, moving on. So anything else on Slanners' report? Okay, so we have Five Forks Farm. Hello. Yeah, you can join the secretary.
We'll have to suspend the regular.
Right, we need to suspend, uh, the regularly scheduled meeting and open a public hearing for Five Forks.
These ones are yours. It actually has the other ones. Sorry, I ran out of stamps, so.
So we have, uh, received this and you all had a chance to look at it. So we've got the plan now, when parking spaces all laid out in the back. Did anyone, and we had reports, Mike, do you want to say what the, our, what our various departments said?
Yeah, uh, there was, uh, and Grace, you could probably chime in as well. Um, there was, there was only, uh, you, obviously Grace has been working with DBW, so, uh, there's going to be, is or going to be a, uh, of guard rail.
There will be a guard rail, um, on this side, this west side of North Street. Um, the EPW is putting in, um, any built in the correct terminology, a catch basin where they can actually clean it. Because right now it's just this place that runs across the street and there's no way. And it always just floods into our field every.
Across the street.
Very good type across the street.
Right now.
But the issue is, is it, it basically the cell collects some of that.
Right.
Pitch and then it gets backed up, so.
Right.
This is just decent work.
So this right now, this is a whole slew of invasives, hanging tree, um, poison ivy, the whole nine yards. And I've been wanting to clear it, but knowing that it's basically, it holds up the road right now. Um, and Dennis said, please don't cut anything down yet. So that's part of the plan, um, fired on.
Yeah, they said they asked about the turnaround.
Yeah, so now we're filming in this, the final construction plan. We're getting rid of both islands. So.
These two islands.
Correct. Um, fire didn't want one, and then we just thought, well, having the other one will just sort of, well, here. So we're going to do away with them both. Um, other than that.
And Pat Roach, building for the former building measure, just, uh, one to identify where the access was into the building that's existing.
He knows this last day, right?
Yeah, he's already, yeah. He's already done.
Any questions from any of your members? Somebody talked about this adjournments.
I just have a procedural question. We can wait till the end. Here for the Indian neighbors.
Any board members have questions?
If there's nothing else from like, uh, erosion control or anything like that, while having a pain, she's just having dirt on her hair.
So is, this is going to remain gravel, so it is.
That, the doubt, it's going to actually be paid.
Oh, it is going to be.
Yeah, right now it is.
It's gravel.
So gravel down there, yeah.
Right now it is, well, half gravel, half broken concrete, I mean, broken asphalt. So it is, it is, it's a nightmare.
This area here is, 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 how would characterize as an impervious, right? More or less.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Correct.
And then underneath your, um, greenhouse, is that also an appropriate surface?
Right now, yeah.
Yeah, so a lot of this is impervious.
Currently, yeah.
So with the whole, with the whole, all of these parking spaces in this area will be paid.
Correct.
So, uh, it's an agricultural zone, so we're not increasing the impervious surface twenty twenty. It's already, it's existing, but I'm making more.
We're making some.
We are making some more.
This is all.
Correct. Correct.
That'll be Dave as well.
Correct.
And I see you've got a, you've got a gravel strip there to, uh, to run on.
Yes, and then there's the two catch basins, which are going to be in the island. And then there's this fire retention area that then, that filters the water that then flows into the old pond, which then flows into what we call the new pond.
And these catch basins will still be in these locations, but they won't be the islands, right?
Right.
Okay. Did conservation have anything to say?
Well, um, I don't, they haven't issued anything yet, correct? They, they.
We, we did the NOI and we have the order conditions. We are waiting for the DEP.
There, yeah.
Time to elapse, which, or the appeals period.
So there are DEP comments, uh, that I know, um, the, the conservation commission took under consideration and then at this time feel there were necessary to address based on what you're.
Correct.
Is my.
What's the appeal for twenty days, like, uh?
Yeah, I think so.
I think that's next Wednesday, I believe, um, or less, so fingers crossed.
Okay.
I think the order of condition doesn't include.
Does include.
The, uh, erosion controls devices, drain construction.
During, yes, and then the next, and the, the final plan, construction plans will include that, I think, we're crossing our fingers that DEP just something else for.
Yeah. That.
Just as community members, I'm not a near neighbor, but, uh, I believe that also. And I just want to speak in favor of them because, uh, it's just, I think, a blessing to have a small farm. You know, it's a rare entity and to have, you know, a thriving family, I've seen that they have like a little. Anyway, I've seen the, the video of, of your farm, a lot of your dahlias from them. So it's just such a blessing to have a small farm, uh, you know, thriving in this, in this community. I think, uh, supporting is awesome.
Yeah, I just hope, like, it's a real game changer for us, um, you know, in terms of a public safety and trying to separate my home area with the business side. And, you know, if you've ever gone there, the driveway isn't disrepair. Going down there is in disrepair, everything. I don't want it to seem like we don't care to make it.
Right.
Better, um, and I feel like this is one of those as insignificant or, you know, I've been working on a parking lot for a year, you know, um. It's really going to bring along.
Any other comment from anyone, public comments, members? Tom, you had something proceeding, you got away to our targets. Okay, so hearing no other comments, I think we're ready to close this hearing and reopen our, our regularly scheduled meeting. Thank you, Grace.
Thank you guys.
Have a, we've got a, a decision drafted, probably pretty quickly.
You can take a vote.
Oh, we need to take a vote.
Well, that's, that's my procedural.
Yep, yep.
Point. Since, uh, parking lots and this is, is minor change, if you have a site plan on file, this doesn't have, but we have this, which equals a site plan. We have our, look, as we have the road, we have the medicine bounce perimeter, we have buildings, the parking. So I think we as a board, procedurally, have to vote to approve the site plan first.
And then the change.
And then this is a minor modification, which we would approve subject to approvals of the boards that are a pain in the neck for you right now. So.
There's the ones.
It would be.
The ones that are still pending.
The ones you will meet too, so. But, uh, these, uh, two steps, one is through the site plan as submitted, and second is to approve the parking change subject to.
Yes, do, is there someone trying to speak? Okay, so do I have a motion on the site plan as submitted?
I move that we approve the site plan for Five Forks as submitted.
Exactly. Okay, and since we're all here, we can just do a voice, so all in favor?
Hi.
I opposed. Okay, site plan is, so I have a motion on a minor modification to the site plan.
I would move that we approve the minor, uh, modification to the site plan subject to the final town approvals.
Wow, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed. Okay. So we get that signed next meeting?
Then you can, can you help out with any, any.
Those are good as public hearings. Never happened.
I think so.
Okay, so, uh, moving on to questions regard, in regards to parking for commercial use, town of Ockton's own bylaws, site plan, oh. But, uh, one thirty eight A.
Yeah, that's us.
And I saw some emails from you, I think.
Okay, thank you for allowing us to come. My husband and I, uh, are, my name's Sarah King. So. You're considering buying this property, one thirty eight A, is half, it's right next to the Dalton Hat Factory. Literally right next to there, um, that gazebo. And it's half of this eighteen hundreds house. Big white house, uh, little tiny stamp, probably, um. Parking is, yeah, yeah, and it's in pretty good condition. That's parking is out, out back, um, it, it's these two big metal, like, um, garages, yeah, that they had used, um, I think for fixing cars or some, something, but, um. So our main question, our extended use for the space is, I'm a physician by trade and I would like to have, um, an office there by appointment, low flow, also with alternative, like, complimentary people, maybe massage, kind of like the body fix. I don't know if any of you are familiar with that, right, across the way, similar, but with like a physician's, uh, availability there. Um, also, I would love to have like one wall of just super low flow retail, but imagine like the local people can make handmade things and we sell them, like the local farmers or just local craftspeople, just to support that, um, that. So they, there, like, one wall inside of there would be for that type of a thing, handmade things, low flow retail. And then there would be by appointment physician, uh, appointments, by appointment massage, for example, kind of similar to the body shop, if you've ever been there, um, except with a physician. And a little bit more, um, their products are more just like, uh, you know, here or stuff or whatever, this would be more of a community thing where actually we'd invite people to, you know, sell their things there. Also, um, my hope is to enrich the area, not just with that, but to actually evolve a relationship with that. It's, I think it's like almost ninety units of low income holder housing, and that's, um, I love that population. I used to work at Cambridge All the Lines. I just left there after a ten year commitment. So I just, I, I like that population and I, I want to try to build a relationship with them. I'm not sure what that would be, maybe it might be public health, like free workshops once in a while, or it might be, uh, house business I could make there. I don't think this, uh, site, it's not my intention to make it like a PCP, you know, office for everybody, because I don't think it can handle that traffic. But I do want to have like a relationship with that. I mean, it's just literally right next door, so it just kind of begs that relationship. So that's my hope is to have that public health outreach, um, with them in one way or another. And then also to have the by appointment things I mentioned. And then the final piece is also to have, um, just gardens in the front. But it's not that big of a lot, but it's big enough to make a community garden, so the people from next door, whoever wants to be involved, just to kind of enrich that environment. So that's the vision for this space. And, um, we're at the point now where we have an accepted offer and we're like, you know, and haven't yet done that purchase and sale. So we wanted to kind of come and do a little bit of due diligence as best we can to see if, I think the main place where we would potentially, uh, need some flex or, you know, i- is the parking, because, uh, so again, it's for that space, it would be by appointment and maybe low flow retail with those crafts. But, um, I think there's, if you look at the, um, by, uh, we spoke with our engineer and he was saying, he gave us the measurements for the parking, so I'm not sure, but they, they listed as four parking, but if you do like full true parking spots, it may be three, so three or four parking with it. And then, um, out front is Main Street, uh, which I, I think, I, I was informed that it's not, you're not supposed to park there, but, uh, then my builder was like, there's no, that's there. Yeah, 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 please.
Is it, it's a residence now, isn't it?
You're right, people are living there, but my understanding is that.
I mean, as, as far as the town, the tax bill is to a resident.
But the, I guess, was there ever another use, is there?
Well, this note, you put it, I, I, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I thought we weren't allowed to have a culture residential, but there's no commercial.
So it's only commercial industrial, right?
I thought there was a, I thought there was an N for the planning board and what.
We didn't know we should be living there.
Uh, the zoning district, where this is located, is the commercial industrial district.
So there's no mix?
There's not mixed use, no. Uh, so, uh, yes, so yeah, Tom, where you, where you're getting, you're, you're absolutely correct. So, um, I skipped down on the table of use, uh, principal uses, I may, I'll, I'll, I'll pick it up here first. For mixed use facilities, um, it should say, yeah, here it is, mixed use under the CNI and indicating now, mixed use being obviously the, the mix between commercial and residential. Um, I think it's permissible to have, uh, likely the, the business use that, that's being described at that property, um, with the necessary parking. But under that provision, I don't, I don't think there's the availability to have both commercial with, uh, any sort of a unit of residential.
That's the way I read it. I mean, I.
Yeah, and actually, I think initially that, that's how it comes out in the notes, but we're actually not seeking that here. We don't, after having a long conversation, um, yeah, earlier. My understanding is that we may later apply for mixed use in this location, but we need to get more information from the current person.
I don't think we're allowed to give you.
Yeah, no, 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 again, um, I'm actually not requesting that at all here, because that's, um, I've been, uh, informed that you have to kind of prove that it's been in mixed use and then talk with the building commissioner. So that's actually not, and I spoke with Grace, it's actually not my question for you all at all. My question is just, let's say we go with pure commercial, because my understanding is you can go either pure residential, because it's continuation of current use, or you can be pure commercial. So we're just talking to you about, hey, here's this pure commercial use, here's our vision. Um, but these are the parking spaces that are here with us. You know, I know there's a goal to revitalize this area, you know, is this something, just to kind of get a feel like, is this something you all could see working with a parking or, um?
We have a couple of different formulas for the amount of parking, the size of lots, how many handicapped spots you better put. We, that's all pretty straightforward.
Is this in the, the, in the central business department that allows for the shared parking spaces?
So, yeah, if, if I could jump in, um, and we have business, Mike Anals, Director of Land Use and Inspection Services. The, uh, the parking question is relative to site plan approval, because, uh, in your, um, site plan bylaw, under the zoning bylaw, uh, you have the triggers, uh, which is a conversion, one of them is conversion from, uh, of a, of a business use, and, you know, expansion of two thousands.
But it says either not both everywhere.
Sure. Okay. Um, oh, well, I can bring it up, but yeah, no, I, I, Tom, you're right. I believe it's, it's either of, of, um, those provisions, not, not both or, or more. Under site plan approval, lookability, um, construction alteration or exterior expansion of two thousand square feet or greater, or change of use within a municipal, municipal, institutional, commercial, industrial or multifamily structure with four or more connections. So I think we obviously, we're, we're, we look at this because it's the change of use from.
Residential.
Residential to commercial. So that would come under this board's jurisdiction for, uh, review of site plan. Obviously, there's not much to review under site plan for this, except for to ensure that the appropriate amount of parking is provided. And then, uh, under your.
Question, is it possible, like, let's say we were to reduce, because the current square footage is twenty-two hundred, but if we were to reduce that under two thousand, just with a usable business space, could be, be relaxed from that, or how would that work?
It's, it's via trigger, as far as I know, that doesn't trigger this board, just the building, just the building inspector. So when you go, everybody should go to the building inspector first. And he sent you, you wouldn't come here.
Yeah, we spoke with the building folks and.
That's the first step is, is go to the building inspector, because if he says that's under his control, you don't have to come here or the zoning board.
So the trigger, the trigger was two thousand?
It was. Yeah, so she first went to the building, it's where I'm, I'm taking this now. She's thinking of doing under two thousand, which is a question which might say, so the, the.
It's going from.
They say, you don't need to go.
Well, if it's going from what it is now to commercial, that's fine, that's just easy process. If it's currently a residential, they'll have to go from residential.
Right, but it said, it said, if it's, but it's more than two thousand square feet changing.
Yeah.
Or ten parking spaces.
Oh, that was, um, well, I, I have the parking up here now, but, um.
Nine parking spaces doesn't trigger a site plan by itself.
So site plan approval, so I, I mean, this would be good to get the board's opinion as to whether or not you think this in and of itself would be discussed tonight, would require site plan under. And obviously, this board has, uh, a lot of discretion, uh, in, in things, uh, your own site plan rules.
But if the question was, if it's under two thousand or under ten car parking, you don't have to go for a site plan. It's controlled by the building.
You, to, yes, yes. The, I mean, that, that's, that's if this board, you are, that's if you, this board is all, is agreeing that the change from residential to commercial pursuant to this section doesn't in and of itself require site plan approval. What I was, what I was beginning to say, um, you know, review of a site plan for a, a site like this, you're not reviewing a whole lot. Your, it's basically, uh, would be a review of whether or not this board agrees that the amount of parking that is presented is an acceptable amount of parking. And the reason why that question would remain unanswered, um, would, is because your off-street parking requirements do not address the type of use that was described tonight. That, that's, so the site plan is the, the mechanism through which this board decides if a use has enough parking. So. Of course, you always, you always have the ability to waive site plan requirements, should you feel it's, uh, something in the best interest of town.
So just another question. Um, this seems to be a work in progress. You're sort of looking at all different options of what you would like to do here and.
No, that's exactly what we're going to do. I mean, it's already licensed. Okay, we already have the LLC, like.
Ready to go with the little shops next door and what.
No, just, I think, within there, so this place, it's pretty big, actually, like, within there, it's actually all, pretty much all ready to go, uh, within there. Yeah, we, we would, we would do it within there. Yeah, I mean, i- if we. Yeah, okay.
Later, change abuse.
Yeah.
Change of the zone use or change of the current use that it is.
Uh, my interpretation, that would be the change of the current use. Typically, the way I, I've seen that done is by, uh, you would look at the use table that is in your zoning, uh, bylaw and decide if you're changing categories within the use, uh, table. So in this case, it would be, you have a residential category, which has uses of that, and you have a, uh, retail and commercial category. There's uses listed into that.
So we are definitely changing category. Although, um, to the best of my knowledge, this person lived in the home and used the garage as an auto shop. So we're still trying to get information about them, about like, why it was licensed and how long they did the shop, because just to prove continued use it, but, um, we don't have that info yet. So that's my understanding is that he, he was actually using it for mixed use. Yeah, but obviously it would be a change of type of commercial use.
Have you done any environmental work on that, um, with the, I don't.
There's nothing there, really, like, it's just a, um.
Like oil, yeah, yeah, no, no oil, or.
No, the garage is, I think, pretty, yeah.
It's not a body shop, it's a residential, yes, wow.
Yeah. I think, so I don't know how long they were doing it or like what, to what degree, because we haven't got that information yet, but, yeah, that's a good one, I think, yeah.
So is there a requirement, um, is there a parking space requirement for, you know, I mean, I don't know what you're projecting for.
One parking space per one hundred eighty square feet. What's?
So is that, is, I mean.
Yeah, I think that's.
Is that, is that really all across all different kind of things that you can do? Like, isn't there a separation between.
Yeah.
And getting, eating in restaurants versus a.
Well, but currently it's a residence, so the parking would be residential.
Yeah, but we're, if, if the question is, is there enough parking for it to? Yeah, but we're, if, if the question is, is there enough parking for it to be?
I think it is both actually currently, not currently, because it's moved out, but.
Right.
It was, it was both, um.
Because if, if, if we, if we were allowed to, um, to mix the use, it'd be. How many cars per family through the four, the four. For parking, what, what we, what, what the building inspector expect on, on parking one. For, yeah, we do two per for our road test when we do our road, uh, travel per, per day. We expect two cars per house.
Yeah.
Per day.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that would typically be, yeah, and for, um.
So we're talking flow, like that we would expect as maybe five people per day or something like very low flow.
Right.
Um, and it would be again, more of like a base that we would actually go out potentially to home visits or have those. More shops at the place next door, because it's huge. They, there's so many people there. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't see everybody here at, at our place.
Would be, would be a curb cover. You have to change the entrance on, on forty at all.
So, um, that's, that's already, I mean, this is where like the old elder center, yeah.
Way that that's the state, the state gets involved.
Yeah.
So if you get the changes of parking is behind instead of.
Yeah. I don't think, I don't think we can fit any parking in the front. That's for the gardens.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still confused about the parking requirements, because if it's. Like for every hundred and eighty feet, that would be for a commercial.
Really? This isn't really commercial retail like.
Well, except they're talking about the, talking about the third person now. Um, they're talking about putting in the retail establishment where people can, you know, it's like a wall. It's not really.
Not a big store.
Yeah. Um, but I'm just.
Just like the body fix, hold the body fix. I don't know if you've ever been in there, but they have one wall of products, but this would be a little bit.
Yeah, hairdressers do that too, you know, they have their wall of hair products.
Yeah, yeah. But yeah, I think it's a, it's, it's a very, uh, valuable question. I appreciate your thought on it because, you know, it, it's just. It sounds like revitalization is a goal, and yet this is zoned, it's only commercial industrial zone. It's actually not residential zone. But how you, how do you flourish that when, if you try to go by that one eighty for one ratio, you can't, definitely can't do that here. So how would?
Yeah.
How would anybody, uh, unless those rules are flexed? Yeah.
One of the things we tried to do most successfully was have downtown, anybody that had a, a business downtown be able to put. Uh, a rent, uh, apartment, yes, just for extra money, it just.
That will be awesome, yeah.
One store, but, but that's only for the.
The other thing that we did in the central district is we allowed for shared.
Shared park.
So the, the little brewery can use the town parking.
Could this be considered like extended?
We, we can't do that, but I think the town should extend it all the way. Uh, we stopped, we had two zones, right? We did it in two different sections. We did one, we didn't do the.
We stopped just one of you, I think.
But, but that has no bearing on her request though, because that would take all town meeting process.
Oh, no, 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 no. The, the only thing is it would.
Yeah.
We have, there is a precedent for allowing for shit.
So it's something to look at, but right now, is there a way that we can? Do a, I mean. Like, you know, I'm thinking of the hairdressers in town and body fix and places like that. There is, um, like the one I go to salon.
Yeah, that's where I go, and there's only what, four spaces, I'm there.
And, and there are people that work there too, and they just, you know, with this club, it's, you know, we have customers.
And I think that's a reasonable.
Yeah.
Compare, that was exactly the comparison I was thinking.
But I'm just wondering, what authority do we have to do that?
Well, we did it. We did it with, with, uh, Salon Richard Anthony.
Well, that, they're in the downtown business district.
But it was before the downtown business district. I mean, before the change over anyway.
Where would the parking actually be?
It's in the valley.
Yeah.
We put an extra separate system.
You're right, it looked like a little shed in the back. That thing, and the thing next to it, that white thing, and then the big thing, there's two garages.
So when people.
Parking in it?
We could remove it even.
Just take it out.
That's what our engineer was thinking, just take it off and make it a thesis.
And you might have spaces.
Yeah, and one thing we did with the business, they, they had a, uh, they had a, I mean, a hair salon to the, where they lived. And, but they had to put in an extra separate system for the hair salon.
Because of the chemicals.
The chemicals, but that's the kind of thing that we have to look at.
Yeah.
You know, mixed use.
Yeah.
Yeah. But right, but right now you're not talking about people living there.
To be honest, I would. The, it, it's very confusing to having it be an apartment, but Mike was saying that like mixed use is a little bit, you have to make sure there's, it, it's, you have to go to the. This building commissioner and ask. We might, we're gonna probably ask for that, like, ask if we could at some point. Because you could still do the, it's hard to explain, but the way the inside is laid out, you literally just put up one door and it's a whole. Private apartment, um, so that would be amazing. We have an elder in need. Anyway, i- i- it's, it's, um.
The basic request, the basic reason you're here tonight is you're thinking of putting an offer on the table.
Yes.
And do you know whether this stuff is workable?
Reasonable, yeah.
Is there, you know, is there some relief that you can be given before?
And do we even need to file a site plan?
File, yeah.
That's, I guess, the, the first question.
Change in use, we can't, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to make this easy.
But if it's less than two thousand, then it wouldn't even.
Change in use.
Correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't it say if greater than two K, then da, 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 da?
Yeah, as well as change.
Changing use or?
All by itself, a change in use requires a site.
Yeah, or, yeah.
Yeah, but that's the only difference of interpretations of change in use. Mike's was, there's no change in use, because they are commercial industrial, and yours is.
Oh, no, no, I was, I was saying it's a change in use.
And I'm, and I'm wondering that, does that mean that it's a, it's currently zoned commercial? It can be used as commercial, but a change of use, but currently it's being used as a house, so.
Right.
It would be a change in use, changes taxation structure, change.
So it's. Conforming use.
Right now it's a non-conforming use, yeah, because, uh, a single family home, and even those that says zero lot lined, um, attached, um, single family home. Um. Yeah, the single family homes in the CNI district require special permit. Yeah, so obviously we know down the road and find out, um, as much of them.
Could you, could you scroll onto that exception, exception just a little bit more?
Any construction alteration, demolition, removal of a structure that's considered routine maintenance? Or that does not result in substantial change in parents shall be exempt from.
Oh, I mean.
Additional statements is no maintenance fixing the ones you got.
Yeah.
Finding for fixing them.
But my question is, is this something that between the building inspector and us? And maybe even ZBA that we can. Make work if they do what's necessary, make it work, or is it a non-starter?
No, I think they can make it work. I think they can definitely make it work. I think that the question really is. Do they need to do the, 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 uh, site plan? And it could be, you just witnessed.
Yeah.
A very similar situation with the last site plan that we reviewed, that it was like. Triggered, done it, and we said, okay, we're just gonna do it. But we'd already looked at it and you saw that it wasn't actually all that much of a.
But it's like stretch residential, she has her business there.
Yep. No, I know, but all I'm saying is the similarity was that it was. We debated two, two readings ago, like there was a site plan needed, and then we said, yeah, I think so.
Does it, does it on file?
Yeah.
But the other thing that I was thinking based on the conversation we just had, I'm sorry, was not. Um, is that, um. You know, it's good if you're thinking about maybe doing something else later. To have a site plan on file, because then you can just look at modifying.
What you said about the, the greenhouse.
Yes, right. And so then you can look at modifications without having to go to the whole site plan approval again. So. It's not necessarily a bad idea to get site. But, um, I'm sorry, that was you, I.
But our, our hands are tied a couple of ways procedurally. One is that there's an N in the bar that says, we can't, we, so we can't do that, we're not allowed to do that.
It's not allowed to do mixed use.
So you're allowed to do mixed use, so.
But we're not, but we're not talking about mixed use right now.
But if they, if it's not mixed, it's gonna be what's, um. So, yeah, grants out of the closet, that stays as long as nobody changes anything. As soon as they change it, it's the rules of that day that you change. So if it's gonna go to, to a commercial use. From what it is now, that by itself triggers a site plan. The site plan itself would require.
Parking.
The this, the that.
And we don't, yeah, we don't necessarily mind doing a site plan, but my point is just, yeah, we've spoken with our engineer, he's awesome, Dave Maukrenau, I don't know if you all know, I'm his local, um. But the thing is, we're just trying to get a little bit of information about the parking, because, um, we don't, we, you don't, he doesn't mind putting up a site plan, but it's just the parking where we would definitely need flex from the written. Uh, you know, what's here, because we cannot, with that thing, we can't meet one eighty to one ratio.
But.
I don't think anybody.
So, but if it's grandfathered currently, you can't make these changes without triggering.
But, but I think the question though is, we, we can deem that, that. That ratio isn't really appropriate for this use, like we said.
And that's what I'm here for. Yes, I'm not here to say.
Up to nine, you don't have to charge them. If all you're doing is putting parking spaces in a business.
Yeah, no, but, but what we're doing, assuming that they're doing a site plan, when we look at the government spaces. They're not gonna be able to meet one space per one, one.
If it's less than two thousand, you don't trigger that plate. So under ten, you don't trigger that one. The only way you trigger it is to change.
I understand that, that was the, the question was, once, okay, we are doing the site plan, okay? And they're gonna come in with four parking spaces, and that doesn't meet the requirements of the site plan.
For residential.
No, four parking spaces for this business.
How can we say that's commercial or a business related parking space if it's a house?
Because they're going to come in with a site plan to make it into a business.
Zoning to do that. It, we can't, it says either, uh, it doesn't say both.
No, but they're not gonna live there. They want to put, they, they wanted it to be commercial.
It would be commercial, we can't. So what they're doing is, is they're gonna do a site plan. And they're not gonna do mixed use, they're not gonna do residential. Um, well, let me, you'd like you. Let me use.
Yes, yeah.
Get this settled first. So, yeah, they don't want to do residential. And if, then we could just come in for site plan.
For what? What's a site plan for? Change of use?
Change of use.
Do, do commercial, retail, and that's what it's already zoned for.
And that's nice, so we'll have four parkings, let's say, not, not one parking per.
And then we have the four park.
I'm not so sure that that change of use doesn't trigger us. To do all the things, do the, uh, the neighborhood, to do the premise, to do the section, to do all the things.
Yes. We, we understand that it's triggering the site plan, right? But then their, their question is. Do we have the ability, which I believe we do, to waive the requirements for the number of spaces and cut it back from. One per one hundred eighty square feet to. The number that, that seems like would be used by the use that they are perusing, which is what we did with the, with Salon Richard Anthony.
Because no business will meet that, that template. We have the flexibility.
We have waived such compliance, although one thing we can't waive is a site plan. And that's why, and that site plan is gonna have perimeter, that is gonna have a perimeter, and that perimeter is gonna have setbacks. And if, and if any of those setbacks are in violation of days, that's gonna be waived, that setback. If there's anything, we're gonna have to check, uh, the drainage, we're gonna have to check. All of the things, it's not just gonna be parking. Parking is gonna be one of the least.
It's a typical site plan.
Site plan, we're going to do a site plan. Because they are going to change the use of the building.
Yeah, it's a plan, and they have, their engineer has to show up and meet all the town, you know, requirements.
But, but then we will say. We, we have the ability to say, but you don't have to have. One space per one hundred and eighty square feet.
I agree, I agree, but, um. One other. Elements are gonna be required in a site plan. Did you pull, how, which, when you apply for a site plan, things that have to be on it? And I don't wanna just look at parking.
I mean, our engineer is pretty familiar with it. He looks, yeah, so I think, I think he'll be okay.
It, it, in setbacks, it's, I mean, my, my house, there are all these, it's a whole site plan.
Yeah.
You know, it's, uh.
But that was, thank you all for taking the time. Those, that was honestly the main thing, is just to. Okay, is this something that fits within your vision? Like, if we're honest, we're telling you to be willing to flex the parking, minimum parking.
One thing that seems from the. Challenge though, if you want to keep the residential. I don't.
Vote to, uh, surveying. Uh, it says it can be prepared by either an engineer, architect, or surveyor.
And they have an engineer.
This might take a little bit, like, what Mike, the way he phrased it to me was, you can either do residential or commercial, that's kind of what you can do. It's one, it's one, it's approved.
Yeah.
Uh, continuation of mixed use. Which we. We might, this process is probably gonna take. Rent and house service, I mean, it's, putting in mind my vision, and then as soon as it got approved. Yeah, and Mike said, because it's a continuous, we wouldn't need anything special. But, um, but then as soon as, um, the site plan is approved, then we can kind of shift to, but honestly, it might take a year or something, is my guess, to kind of fully get to that point.
And it give you a chance to establish if it was.
Yeah, it was.
Requirements.
It's a residential, not any commercial, which, uh, so we may have been. Operating a rogue, a body shop, which a lot of people do, but, um, they weren't paying.
Benchmarks, things like that.
Right, yeah, you're right.
It's not just.
It would say that.
It isn't just.
Yeah, that's.
Yes, parking has to be open later on top of those.
Yes.
Um, and then also, if you, you go ahead and. Convert it to commercial use, then you've foreclosed on. Ever using it as a residence, or actually get some other.
Yes.
You have to go to ZBA, yeah.
Unless we can extend the zone.
But this is, yeah, it is to the extent that you decide that it's not working the way you expected. You'll only be able at that point to sell it as a commercial business.
Yeah.
Right?
But then, uh, two, there's a two-year.
So.
Oh, okay.
So it's just a.
No, that's, that's important to know.
You're, I didn't catch it on.
Okay, uh, so what, what Bill was saying to the chair is, um, the, because it's a, the, the residential use of, of it now. It's residential use in the commercial industrial zone. Um, residential use, single-family home use in the commercial industrial zone is not an allowed use. So right now, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use, grandfathered in, so it's, it's fine, it can continue to be that. But once you change the use. It, to a conforming use, you can't change it back to a non-conforming use. And in this case, that non-conform use is the residential use. So when you switch it over to the, the business. Uh, you have, there's a two-year timeline from the time that you change the use. That the, uh, that the former use, residential use could be considered abandoned. And then you not be able to revert it back to that.
Within those two years, if you want to, you can still go back.
Yes.
I have just one more question, like with governors landing, they were to the ZBA, and they had commercial industrial commercials. Um, so you can, if you go through the ZBA process, get you eventually.
They're, they're, they're fronting on their change of use for the ZBA.
Yeah.
Yes, but just theory.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm just.
Yeah.
I don't need to go for change, but I'm just, I'm just saying.
No, that's helpful. And we are gonna try to get the mixed, the part about the mixed use, if it is a continuation. Because that's, that was our understanding, that's how they actually build it, residential, commercial.
Yeah.
We're doing both, you know, but, you know, we, that's why I wanna just take a little bit deeper. Thank you all so much for your time. Is there any other questions you have for us?
I'll just add.
Thank you for bearing with us.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sat through the chair. I could have sworn when I was, I was reading through the bylaw earlier, and I must be missing it now, I was just trying to scan it, because I wanted to highlight the language. Uh, that if there's a use that isn't described under the off-street parking requirement, then that. Then that authority falls under the planning board to decide what, what it is. And I, and, uh, but I think that's the case here, that's not really adequately described in the existing off-street parking. If I can't find that, it, it, it would be just as good to kind of go to the zoning board first to get a variance from that one hundred and eighty square foot. Um, and then bring that ruling to this board with the site plan review.
Yeah, that may be what, um, Salon Richard Anthony, you know. The other thing is that there used to be a woman in town, Lisa Stratton, who had a store where she. Consigned, bid consignment of local handy. Find, if you could find Lisa.
Yes.
Hello.
These are on the list. We're giving you tons of people to call.
What are you doing? Yeah, I got that one.
Lisa's working so bad.
Somewhere, yeah, in Connecticut, maybe?
No, no, no.
No, she's not Connecticut anymore?
It's in a community.
Okay.
You're packing.
So, Mike, I didn't quite get, I'm sorry, like, from what I got from this group was, yes, it's, you, you need to do a site plan likely, but. Parking will likely be permitted to be flexible, but then at the last minute, you kind of said something about a ZBA approval, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to verify, um, because when we were speaking earlier, I was under the impression that. This board has authority to, to reduce, or not, not, that's not reduce. this board has authority to to reduce, or not, not, not reduce parkings. Uh, they don't, the, the planning board doesn't have the, uh, authority to reduce parking points. But I thought there was a provision that said, in the case where we don't, it's, it's a, it's a use that is not identified within the off-street parking requirement, this board can set the requirements. And that was, that's what I was hoping would be the scenario for this. But I just wanted to make sure I identify that, so that, um, it's front and center.
And if you don't, you'll let them know that they should go to the video first.
And if I can't locate that, if I was mistaken, I'll, I'll, uh, let you know that you just need to go to the zoning board first for a variance from the parking requirement.
But that's like, I mean, I didn't, you know, we had a couple of long conversations before this meeting, or one actually, but, um, I didn't hear that earlier, because honestly, we don't have time to go to the ZDA.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll follow up with you as soon as possible on it. I wanna, I wanna make sure that I find.
Find those words.
But I'm just, I guess what I mean is.
I would think you need to.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm just.
I could be wrong. I might, I might can find it, but it would seem that the planning board had the authority.
Yeah.
And it's, it's not that many.
Yeah, and you were saying if there was precedence with a salon that. Yeah, I just, it's kind of a big deal, because let's say we go to ZDA, and then they say, you know, we have a totally different opinion, then it's like, oh, well, it's a little bit of a.
With any, any site plan like the one before, we asked the town, way in, the DPDW, to say how they, they did that, and, and. And we, we rely on the neighbors, and last, the neighbors can tell us what happens the most in the area. And you put all this together, and that's how we could figure out if the parking is too much or too little. Um, just by.
And I'm thinking, I think, you definitely should have emailed the race car we're practicing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That certainly didn't have.
I think it had two. I mean, seriously, joking, I think it had two, so.
And the, the key for us is we waive things if it's in the best interest of the town.
Yeah, and that's what I hope this is, like, an enrichment.
How many comments? Good luck with your enterprise. I know it hard work, and that does not represent any official position.
But wouldn't the EDC want to extend?
Yes, my name is Amy Chen, the listing agent of this home, and I just have one thing to say is, I can't answer your questions. This garage was never used as an auto body shop. He had, again, two cars. He has three of them. He stores them. I did bring him in. He had a lift. And that's, he still has the three cars. He still drives one. It's a black and white. You'll see it outside. White with a black, GTO, yes, Shelby. He has something else. It was never an auto body shop.
Anyway, I didn't know you were joining us, but that's fine. I had asked this question earlier, but I haven't gotten a reply, so at least, you know, it's here, that's fine. Um, so we, we were wondering, was there a legitimate business in that garage? Because when we came to tour the house initially, that was the impression I got, but maybe I just wasn't. So there was not.
Well, his was there for twenty-five years. He lived there for twenty. He was a Ashland police officer.
Was it a business in the garage, or?
Because that's the. And the last twenty-five years, never, no. He put the lift in, he took it out before, you know, he put it to. And anybody who had a problem, all his friends and stuff would come over and, look at my tires. The lift is now sitting at his son's house, and not sitting, it's in a similar garage at his son's house in Palestine.
Yeah, thank you so much.
It was never.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
So, uh, next, we have our draft plan board and select board, small wireless facility. Which I hear was discussed at our last meeting, and which I read this. We have, yep, we have Lori there, and Peter Friedland, are you here for this as well?
He may have been. Um, just a question. What are we talking about, um, with the wireless?
That's, that's what I was going to ask, because I was up here at the last meeting, and I read over the comments, but I.
Can I, before that, make a comment, an open meeting style comment? The materials on the website, like, do not reflect the changes I circulated on, so. Just, just so you know that, should the chip of the email or three minor changes, I made a response to the first, the last meeting, just for formality's sake.
So, but, but, but I think the, the first question I have is, what is our goal this evening? Because I was not at the last meeting, and so I want to know what the goal of, of this is at this point.
Is to get one step closer.
One step closer, but what are the, what are the issues that were raised at the last meeting and happened and resolved?
I wasn't here.
You weren't here?
Actually, you're being accurate. The, the impact of, well, the first thing was that, was that most of the impact is gonna be down mainstream, and there probably won't be any things aside, and I, I asked a question about what is the signal that comes out when you go down, is it three sixty? So how many, how many of these towers?
I guess I wanna, I wanna, wanna back up one step before that, because this is a draft policy for approval of small wireless facilities by the planning board and select board. So, and this is not a bylaw, but talking about here, we're talking about a policy when someone comes in with, with a proposal.
Yeah, just to follow up with what Tommy just said, I think the last meeting, um, set the stage. I think David gave a slideshow, um, you know, that would have, if there was a bylaw. And I think was the plan is to have a policy in place in, in the event that town meeting approves the bylaw. So this is what the purpose of the civil.
So this is the policies that would come out of the bylaw if the bylaw.
Somebody comes in, makes, makes, they hear something.
No, I, yeah, no, I understand how policies, it's just that was what was confusing to me, is we don't have a bylaw. And so if you don't have a bylaw, then.
It took me three quarters of my.
I've examined a lot of similar policies, similar but not the same, because we had no guidance from anybody um, around Massachusetts. Only five towns, nearly six, have it in their bylaws. Policies by themselves, if they're on fire with the town clerk, have, are absolutely legal and have, are, are enforceable. The purpose, I think, I think Lori agrees with this, the purpose of doing it to the bylaw is to give the town the assurance and for the town to get the two boards, the instruction to you helped, you, you added a phrase to this draft bylaw, but it didn't get through the lay. Uh, they just instructions to the boards to take care of the town. Now, most towns haven't bought this, and not, not a single city has, because these things are but I, I, I agree with Lori, it's good to have the town feel that they've got a handle on this. Um, we would be unique, because not for any truth, we adopted the same thing, possibly the same thing, but recently. So, we're the first small town to even think about. Doing it, this meant the two, the two statements.
Yeah, so I'll clarify that, uh, because it's intended to be a combined policy between this board and the select board. Um, there doesn't need to be any official, uh, bylaw on the select board side things, right? Because they already have the authority, um, over the public rights of way and, and, and public, uh, land. And so then, adopting this policy would just, uh, assist them, uh, with, I guess, it would be what's referred to as poll hearings, is the official, um, uh, official filing that would come to the select board, um, for something like this. And then, basically, until, I think until the, the, the town meeting approves a small cell uh, zoning bylaw, that's when this would kick in. Um, and you'd be ready for, uh, you know, you already have it in place, essentially, so. Um, but, uh, my suggestion to this board would be, uh, if you're, you know, you work through it, uh, but when you get to a, a, a document that you're satisfied with, no, I, I'm sure I'll be taking this over to the select board to get similar feedback from them to make sure that they are also okay with, with, um, changes.
And then, in order for us to adopt a policy like this, I believe we do have to have public hearings.
Yes.
Planning. Probably.
I think.
Or maybe we could do it as a joint hearing.
I'm sure you could, yeah.
If it goes into something like the subdivision control, it's just a point.
But this is, this is a, these are policies for planning board and select boards.
But if it's gonna be a site plan or any change to zoning, the planning board is required, and then give its recommendation to moderate any changes.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. But, but we're not talking about this policy, not the change to the zone.
So my, my question is, where's, where's what going? Is this gonna be, uh, becoming this, also, it's gonna be a site plan application to the planning board?
Essentially, yes.
Special permit just recite.
No, well, um, so, we will also, as was the recommendation of this board, uh, be putting small cell back on the warrants for the fall meeting. Um, in which case, and that, and, and no language will be changed, uh, from what the original recommendation was. Uh, and that will require a special permit. So, uh, assuming that that gets passed at fall town meeting, there will be a requirement to get a special permit, as well as a site plan through this board. Uh, if, if small cell wireless were to be installed on private property. Not public rights.
But that's, but that's gonna set the standard that the selectmen are gonna be able to use.
Yes.
Correct, yes. So, just to reiterate your question, what is the goal for tonight?
Yes, because. And one, and one other, before we go there, and I totally agree that, that that's an important question. And that is, so this, this policy includes the site plan approval. Should, if we're drafting this so that it can be applied once a bylaw passes, should we also have the special permit process in here, or do we add that later?
Oh, um.
Lori is nodding.
I'm neutral on that, what we need to discuss, I think, as a matter of procedure.
Right.
You have your wireless transfer facility rules and regulations. So we'd have to take a look at and see what applies and what does not within that.
Yeah, because we don't have any towers. They're all vertically enrolled.
There's been a delicate mentor to through the cell tower regulations, and these regulations just won't be different under different circumstances, which they can't, but also recognize that most of them are gonna be on the roadside anyway, apart from few private roads. You have authority on private roads, right? They're not much way. So, on a sidewalk in local minutes, that would be your authority.
Yeah, and, and the specific location of the road is gonna be the selectment. It's gonna be, yes. Um, it's gonna be based on, well, our experience is gonna be very beautiful. I don't, so if we can keep the, the special bit by law, wherever it's going in the, in the line, is, is, as simple as possible. And then use the detailing, uh, we're gonna give them a policy, if they're gonna come in, we're gonna say, here's the bylaws.
There's a policy that.
Yeah, policy that we recommend, and we, we retain the right, they can say they don't want to do it, and we can say, well, okay, or if you got it.
So, then, then I, I just wanted to ask that question and, and where we put that, uh, if we do the special permit. But then, our goals for tonight are to look through the changes that were made at the last meeting, or?
We just got some, the legacy.
For today, yeah.
You, um, you, you requested three changes, and I put in what I emailed. Lori and Mike, I did another paragraph that I took a sledgehammer to. I apologize with my email a few days ago. I mean, the simple explanation of that is that drop calls and drive tests were useful back when cell phones meant to break things wide into a car. Um, as things have changed, almost everybody has moved away from that in favor of now, the telecoms have very detailed maps that show of propagation and capacity.
Yeah, we, we.
So that's, that's.
Maps for the towers.
So, yeah, and these aren't probably ones, these are ones that the hell. So, I, I probably. We might get the specifics from somewhere else. That's, that's, that's the issue, but.
I would, if, if I may say, I think the two goals for tonight would be to, um, that we, there's some language that we put in. Um, one is about setbacks, how far antennas should be from residences, schools, elder housing, daycare centers, those kinds of things. And the other thing is what David just alluded to is that we put in language so that there would have to be hard data acquired to prove that there was really a need for a cell tower in this certain area, so.
But David.
There are some places.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, right. There are some places where, um, it is suggested or, or telecom puts in many more than are needed, because it's very lucrative for them. And so we want to be sure that we get them where we need them, because there are places we need them in Upton, and that we don't get them where we don't. And the way to do that is by having, um, hard data. And so we have, we put that into this policy document, hoping that you would keep it. I hope you would keep it. David feels differently. Um, the FCC law guarantees people need to be able to make an emergency phone call from every place in town, so we would need antennas in places that that can happen. It really is the only thing that it guarantees. I know that now we think of wireless, wireless as for lots of other things too, but that's not what the law guarantees, so. Um, if, if telecom want to put something someplace else, they can apply for variance, or they can demonstrate need. We just like to get what we, what is necessary and useful and helpful, and not over um, infrastructure in a town where we don't need it.
Yeah, so I, I think we understand that. I, I think David's point, um, is that the, the definition, the way that you've defined how, whether or not the need, uh, using things like drive tests and dropped calls. When we have looked at cell towers before, and we've approved many since I've been on the board, and many antenna arrays since I've been on the board, the way they demonstrate need is with, um, propagation tests, propagation maps done by the, by the, um, by the providers that demonstrate where there is and is not adequate signal in town. They don't usually use dropped calls as their demonstration of need. They use propagation maps. Okay, well, no, we're, so first, first, let me finish what I was saying, which is that is the, that is the data that we have seen before, are the propagation maps, not dropped call data. Um, and now I'm gonna let each of you respond in turn. David, you.
My point is that the, um, drive tests and the drop calls are not hard data. They are subject to so many variabilities in the measurements, who calls me drop for various reasons. The propagation maps are.
Right, and that.
And have been accepted by many towns, um, actually, the two towns I've found that even might have acquired this. It's, it's based upon the right, so I agree with any of the hard data. I'm saying that the old way of doing it, which goes back twenty-five years, is.
And, and I'm, I'm agreeing with you, that, that what we have seen today has not been dropped call maps, but rather propagation maps.
Today, okay. It, it is true that for some time they were using propagation maps, but they've been finding them to be faulty. And now the FCC isn't even accept, accepting them sometimes. So they've just put this kind of language into a, um, bylaw out in Western Mass, which is passed.
Lori, who is they?
The Charlemont just put it, Charlemont, Charlemont just put into their bylaw this exact language. But the advice given to me is that propagation maps, they're not finding them to be useful anymore. Even the FCC is not finding them useful anymore. So maybe this is something we have to investigate a little bit more, I don't know.
Yeah.
And you can be a citation for the FCC not finding it useful, because, um, I, I didn't see that.
So. Let's, let's try to actually have a discussion through the chair. Yes, Tom.
Makes no sense to make them prove that there's a need before they put in. You're gonna put in a bar, you have to prove there's enough people that are gonna drink there before you can go there. They're the ones that are gonna be telling us that people need it, because they do their research, and they're, they'll be the experts, who doesn't have?
Well, that's what, that's how they, they've done it with those propagation maps, they've seen these fast.
We don't need to make them do that.
What I, what I was told was that even the FCC requires carriers to submit hard data in lower propagation maps, which are computer-generated impressions. which are computer generated impressions of cell service and the lack of it. Colleagues across the state of witnesses and stand up during hearings to say that they in fact can make a call with their cell phones in the no service zone as shown by an applicant's engineer. So the applicants have their own engineers, and I think that's probably where the problem is, instead of it being an independent engineer. And so they don't want us as a town to be manipulated that, manipulated that way and told that there is a need when there isn't a need.
So we, what we do generally with anything like this is we do peer review. Right? So, you know, if there are questions to the maps, about the maps that were given, then we can, we can question them. I, I have not seen the evidence submitted shall include but not be limited to drive tests, drop call records and denial of service records evidencing the number, percentage and locations. I haven't seen how those data are collected. So I think I would rather, rather than specify how the, what type of data are used, that the applicant shall also submit evidence of a compelling need to address any significant gaps in the applicant's wireless services through the proposed facilities.
As required by the board.
And then, and then not try to define something that we, that we really can't define here.
Right.
Through the chair, I a hundred percent agree. I think that when you list like this, there are too many variables, like solar layers, like bad weather, you know, it just is like, I, I fully agree that we have the authority to do that. I think that this level of detail is gonna make people go down a rabbit hole.
And, and you know, the reality is I live in a cell hole.
Yeah.
But. But, but every, every. Every Thursday, if it's raining and I stand on my friend's step so I can make a cell call.
I know.
So.
So there we need a small cell antenna. There we need something.
Yes.
To the chair, one other point, Charlemagne, which I believe is a draft, I saw it. I don't wanna do duly precedents, but I haven't seen any other town that's not only produced a requirement for drive test, but even produced the requirement for private proof. So I think every other town is taking what Tom said. Massachusetts now doesn't even count as a precedent, and I've suggested language which has the same goal. In other words, more on Laurie's side than on Tom's side, but doesn't refer to the, now, I believe obsolete mechanisms. So I put that in the email a few days ago. You might wanna chew on that, especially Tom and the chair. To see if, you, you could, that will be accepted or sent to you. Because, again, I, I still wanna be with Laurie in the, we need proof of need. I don't think they will come in and jam cells out because they cost like five figures each. But.
Through the chair, I think your language, so I think, yeah.
Oh, sure.
Grace, did you, I'm sorry, sorry, inside bar conversations. Did you hear what her suggested?
Was just that we stopped after, after the need to address.
I mean, I agree, and I think Tom agrees.
Yeah, and I think, and you know, the, in all of the all of the proposals that we have gotten for cell towers have included that evaluation. Because they're gonna do that analysis because they're not, as you said, gonna spend five figures to put these things up where they don't need to. Because if they already feel like they've got good coverage, they don't wanna spend anymore. So.
Just showing up, this is a thing in there, and it's on, it's on the dead end road. If it perfectly here, that it's unless otherwise specified, fine.
It's how.
So that's, that's the thing, is like the continuous that you can get, if you shorten all of that up. Yeah, what you said, just sense, and then say, or unless otherwise, or otherwise required by the.
Yeah.
Because it, it merits what we do in other areas.
And it's another here is I've been following from around the country. Honest discussion with the planning boards, it's usually a good approach. Anything where people stand on preconceptions on either side of the business ends up. It's, it's been said.
So, okay, so that was one, one place. The others were the changes.
Is the setbacks from residents and schools and things like that, yeah.
Those may change again too. Those are gonna be. I mean, if you're going down, if you're going down any open enoughness off the new street, and you're saying that that houses are not 300 feet off the road. So what's gonna be a base?
Yeah.
So, um, chair. I, I understand the design for a large setback, again, wave precedent around in a dozen other existing regulations that have been used and have been applied. There are setbacks specified in the 2020, 2012. There, there are other requirements I wanna get to. The largest I've seen is Needham, which has a 50 foot setback if technically feasible or less than 300. So that's a phrase that often crops up. So you may say, I would like it to be that far, but I don't want to break the effective prohibition rule, which is a, a, a rule. So any setback can have that phrase added.
Yeah, this, the, the setback to housing here, which says 300 feet, and, and I guess I would.
Excuse me, if I may say, that is what Littleton uses is 300 feet and Burlington is 200 feet. There are other towns besides those that David mentioned that have a larger amount. I know that if we're talking about the main street of town, this isn't gonna apply anyway, I don't think, because that's the right of way, and that's gonna be governed by different kinds of rules. Right?
But if I make, setbacks are according to something, a buffer.
Yeah.
And a, a tendency for buffer, or whatever it may be. So they're related to the area, the use.
Well, so, and the question is what is the, so, so for instance, this letter N is, to the extent possible, without causing an effective prohibition, new wireless structure should provide a setback to residents of 300 feet. And in some parts of town, that's not a problem. Like in the cell hole that I live in, you can find places where you can do that. You can't put those on those on Main Street, but.
300 feet off the road.
Yeah.
Well, you could put it from my house.
Yeah, but the question, I guess, is and, and this is something that, you know, I would have to stop and think about is what is, so another place it was, it started is the applicant shall attempt to locate SWFs and wireless facilities no closer than 300 feet away radially from any other SWF. And that started at 150, and then this one was 300 to upper storing windows, or 300, yeah, so 300 feet from residents. What are the data that have been used to make these choices to, to set these distances in other places? Like Littleton says 200, Needham says 50.
Littleton says 20. I'm looking at Burlington, I don't see what Laurie's referring to, except that I've not tried to get on extended lot lines.
What drives, what, what drives?
What drives the setup?
What drives a setback? It's on what reason, what the reason.
But that's what I'm asking is what is the, how do we decide?
Obviously, it would be safety, correct?
Yes, certainly. One thing, I can, I can be cynical and say what drives a setback is, here again, utter lack of guidance on making some regulations from anybody.
And what's that setback can be just visual. It could be generating light. You need to set it back because you don't need that. This is gonna be for impact visual. It's gonna be for impact.
EMF, EMF, impact or.
That's what, that's what the reason of the setback is to protect people. It's a safety setback.
That's within my reason. I don't think it's Laurie's. So this has been, but.
So people that are 200 are less safe than the people that are 300. Sounds like.
I, I think since most of them in practice have been erected on existing, they tend, national protocols, then any safety with the pole falling over is already taken into account and either discounted or.
Right. So, so that, that's the, the question that is, is what is the? What is?
The national protocols from the house.
Well, yes, I, our, our former, our former power bylaw said that the tower had to fall, roll three times. And they don't, it turns out they don't do that. They don't roll along.
I don't see that.
Although.
But then, but there's another, I think is important, which is sightlines from riddles and yours. So there are rules in here for closely packed houses. Laurie, I, I think you want to address setbacks as well. So let's hear, sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you, if I may, yes. Setbacks are for lots of reasons. They're for visual aesthetics and also for safety. You don't want them, you know, because the research hasn't been done and because our Board of Health even said that they don't feel comfortable making a judgment about the safety of these things. We wanna make sure they're not right outside of children's windows where their brains are trying to develop and all this radiation is coming at them. That's only part of it. It also has to do with that. If you allow a cell, small cell antenna, you have to allow up to eight to be on there. So you can't just say only one. Once you say yes, you have to say yes to them all. And so there's some weight. They all have a, a big box that has to be buried or be someplace that aesthetically not pleasing either. So there's a number of reasons that, that people do it to be away from sensitive populations. And because the FCC never did the research and they've been sued and found that they hadn't done the research, we really don't know. So that's why I'm a little bit relying on our Board of Health. There is a case, as we talked about in Western Mass, where people have been harmed and damaged and are out of their homes. And the Board of Health researched it, spoke to doctors, recognized that the people who were harmed were truly harmed, and now they are all liable because they were told. And we don't want to get anything cited and then have to remove it or have to have a case like they do because people are, are being, are being harmed by them. So there is a lot of studies, but the FCC doesn't look at it.
For a second, can you please, Mark, I have a comment I wanna make, but can you please modify your pronouns? I don't know. You're talking about they's again, and I don't know who you're talking about. You use like they about 10 times in the last two sentences, and there was a whole bunch of different they's.
So if I'm talking about town, we asked, why do towns establish setbacks? So as I mentioned, Littleton, Burlington.
So the town of what?
Town of Littleton has a larger setback. The town of Burlington has a larger setback.
The lawsuit. You're talking about a town that has a lot.
The town that's Pittsfield, where all these people are out of their homes. And yes, it's a terrible thing because they would, the town of Pitts, the citizens from the town of Pittsfield would like the cell tower removed. And so there's a national court case happening, but they are out of their homes. They can't live there. And so we wanna make sure that nobody's harmed by the placement of these. We wanna be careful about it. And our town meeting brought out 80 or so people that feel that they want us to be careful about placement as well. So that's one of the reasons.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just for the chair. When it comes down to the visuals, health is something we should evaluate because some people do have sensitivities, others don't. But I think that talking about putting eight on a, an Upton on a private road, you know, I don't think that's a useful argument because it's not gonna happen unless all of a sudden we turn it into a, a major city. You know, in terms of.
I don't think it's that it was eight on a private road. It's that if you let Verizon put one in on a pole, then any other barrier that wants to put one on that pole gets to.
Oh, I thought she was talking about the big box going in.
Excuse me.
Okay, um, let me finish talking. And the other thing is, you know, with setbacks, I, I do tend to, you know, with all the respect to what Laurie said, and I think we should do this cautiously, that 300 is excessive because as Tommy's example pointed out, it's like he's 300 feet away from the road, but the people right across from him aren't. And I think it's really difficult, even in back roads, you know, to have the 300 for a setback. So I would like to have that, I would recommend that be reduced. You know, and, you know, the other point to that is, so the people on rural roads don't matter as much as the people on Main Street. It's, which is a real argument.
Your original question still hasn't been answered. What the hell we don't? So there's two steps. One of them, I think, is, is the bylaw. It's gonna go into the bylaw. Short and almost finished, right?
It should be done.
So we, we blessed that. We sent it off to the selectmen. Now, the second thing is a, a much longer dual policy.
Right, that's what we're talking about tonight.
Now, why don't we send it as soon as we can to the selectmen for review and set bounce.
Yeah, I think, I think that we've, we've, we've looked at a bunch of things. We, we talked about the issues that came up in the last meeting. And I think calling attention to maybe, maybe simplifying that language on, on testing, but then calling attention to this question of setbacks and, and seeing how the selectmen feel about it might be a good next step.
I wonder if we even can leave setback tug of the bylaw and say it will be.
In the, in the.
Negotiated.
Policies.
That's always the plan. You see, uh.
So you make a very short bylaw that doesn't have specifics so that the policy dictates the specifics.
So the bylaw we have now.
With this, that's what we're working, policy and those specifics.
These are the specifics in the policy. This isn't what's gonna be voted at town meetings. A town meeting is gonna give us the ability to adopt.
Right.
Yes.
So, but you wanna talk about reducing the discussion of setbacks?
No, he was suggesting that in the bylaw, we shouldn't mention setbacks.
They're not in there.
It's not mentioned.
Yeah, we don't mention.
Like that, that.
Yeah, that's why, that's why it's a very short, simple bylaw.
Yeah.
Is there a way, this question, here, is there a point, is there a way we can make the setback requirements in the policy like case specific locations?
That's all, there's pretty much, we would reserve the right, if you want it 150, we say, no, you gotta do 100. Right. We look at that specifically, neighbors are in with that initiative.
And that's, that's the way this is actually worded, which is to the greatest extent possible, without causing an effective prohibition, new wireless support structures should be set back, yada, yada. So that's, that is essentially, we want a big setback, but we know we're gonna have small setback.
Man, I, I think rewriting it in the terms that Tom just said would actually be very valuable. And again, would lead to more productive conversations rather than clashes with the.
I think, and one of the things that I, that, that I don't like about this is the, if we just have it this way, to the greatest extent possible without causing effective prohibition, it should be 30. I think there should be a but nevertheless than, or something as we do in some other.
Minimum.
A minimum.
Requirements. And that, and that would be a minimum safety requirement. Just like with the road or whatever, it's a minimum safety.
Just something to think about.
If I could say one quick thing, I do wanna say that in the studies, the scientific studies that have been done, it has been shown that the incidence of cancer comes into equality with the rest of the population at 1,500 feet away from people. So 300 or 400 feet is much less than it ought to be. So there has been a lot of science done, but we can't use health, I understand, as our, we can use environment as a reason. So we have to be careful about that. But just so you know, what FCC hasn't done the science, telecom haven't done the science, but many, many, many years and years of studies have been done that do show that. And New Hampshire did the deep dive and they studied this whole thing, and they decided to put the brakes on it totally because they, after having done the scientific research, discovered real problems with it and real concerns. And the fact that the FCC has been sued and does not address the lawsuit, it's because they haven't done this, and they've been told you have to study how it is on kids.
So, okay, we, we, we understand that. We've, we've been here. So don't have to hear it again. So, um, I think other than that, I think this is like, maybe send it to the select board and.
Yeah.
With the word draft on it and please comment.
So now, actually, I'm chair. Okay, just put the word in for Grace because she's been taking red notes and produce another draft. And certainly send it to Laurie and Michael for review. In time for when you'll be, give me a deadline.
So what I wanted to say is, I think the substantive part of it. And perhaps you have an executive, yeah, executive summary or something. But there's a lot of mechanical stuff in here, where there's inconsistencies in the way things are called and the process, the timing and so on and so forth, which makes it for a bit of a difficult reading. So I would either actually, really, the only thing I think the select board really needs to weigh in on at this point would be the the distances.
Right. I mean, ultimately, they'll be the ones though that are making a lot of these decisions because it will.
Oh, I understand that. But but, you know, I don't, I I think if you try to read this, as it is, it's very confusing. And there's terms in there which are capitalized but are not defined and so on and so forth.
It's amazing for, definitely appreciate if you could fill through those and it just came together piece by piece out of jigsaw around various other things. And by the way, the first section, the procedures are probably related from a town just being inflated. And and they they need federal ones. But the policies, yeah, they. They're probably a little bit, I appreciate your mind.
Yeah, yeah.
I think with the with the select board comes in is they rule on polls.
Right, yeah.
And that's why they're involved. Right.
Yes, right.
And I think that's the only reason they're involved.
Yes. So Tom's gonna, Tom.
Factors about the selectmen. Don't we give it to the selectmen not because, you know, we. Don't they have the control over the different departments that might be involved, whether that be or not selected still? Yeah. But would it be D B W? Would it be police fire that would have any input on? I can't think of the many, can't think of the departments that the selectmen would send it to.
Probably safety.
So maybe. For help?
Well, I suppose I would just go back to the poll hearing application and use that as a basis for determining who needs to see it.
Yeah, but I think, you know, for now, getting it getting it cleaned up a little bit more and I don't see it as problematic to ask for their comments at this point, but I think you're right. I think that there's more cleaning up that needs.
They will have to accept them as their own policies as well.
Right, so they do need to, yeah, they need to.
Wanted to give it drafted as early as possible. If it's clean enough, so they can add their own stuff. So the the giving them a few red lines isn't a problem if if they're gonna be looking at it, but I wouldn't want to give them a whole bunch. Okay, we should whittle it down as much as we can.
Yeah.
You told me, sorry.
Yeah, so, yeah, and actually, certainly we need to understand what the process is, because it's gonna basically flush that out.
Yeah.
Some towns found the need to have two sets of policies overall that adjust crime into one with as applicable.
Aren't you supposed to say Madam Chair, may I just be?
Madam Chair. Of course you may. Okay, so we're gonna send it to the select.
Gotta clean it up and send it to the select.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Through the chair, I'll take language suggestions. Putting this on the call.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all this time and interest.
Thanks, Lori. I'm worse. Thank you.
So I sent you, I can do either of those dates that you, so I don't know. Does anyone know what were the dates we were considering?
Uh, August 8th or August 12th?
We said the 12th is August.
12th, as long as it's in the evening or a late afternoon. It's gonna be anything.
I would imagine.
Yeah.
I don't think it'd be.
Yeah.
People.
12th is better.
The MBTA zoning public outreach.
Yeah.
Consultants.
Okay, yeah, 12th works for me. Is it work for anybody else?
However, I responded.
I think I think Tommy just asked me if I said meeting adjourned.
I did, but you said through the chair.
Well, I was talking at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, I haven't shared. I'll be more disciplined next time. But you never better than that.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you, Dan.
You adjourned?
Yes, I've been.